This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors.
For the we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
I could last time, but I can't tonight.
No, the thing is it has to be on the agenda.
You let me last time.
It has to be on the agenda.
It wasn't on the agenda last time. And you let me.
Call Dr. Everett in the morning and she will give you those.
I have a meeting in the morning.
We can set up any time that we can chat if you have specific questions.
We have a meeting scheduled.
You and I?
Me and Kaylee, my daughter Megan.
No, I'm saying.
And Brandon.
I'm saying we can set up a meeting anytime. It doesn't have to be in the morning. Anytime that is that works for you.
I have an appointment with the principal in the morning because you guys threw the ball to her for her to answer these questions. And you let me speak for three minutes before the board last month and these weren't on the agenda and now tonight you're saying no. I don't understand.
Well, Chris, Dr. Everett has the answers to the questions that you have. So if we hook up the two of you, it should answer all of your questions. We're trying to make it.
In writing?
Well, once I get them from you, then yeah.
You should have had them. I gave them to her.
Okay.
Last October 7th.
Oh, yeah.
At the last meeting.
I had called you and left you a voicemail to talk through those.
And we have a meeting set up.
Not with us.
Not with me. Yeah, I didn't know that you had a meeting set up.
Because you sent, you threw the ball to the principal of the high school. I don't understand why I can't speak.
Well.
You let me last time. Can you answer that?
I have.
Why did you let me do it last time and you're refusing to let me this time? Can you answer me?
Because your items this time are not on the agenda.
They weren't last time either. They were not.
Well, we don't have well.
What's the difference? What is the difference? I'd like an answer, please.
Modify your request.
How?
Because we're not going to discuss numbers tonight because we don't know what they are.
I didn't get to last time either.
No, what you want to talk about tonight, modify it because we can't give you the numbers from the high school because we don't know them.
You should all have that. You're the board. Where do I go?
You go to Dr. Everett who left you a message to call her about it.
And we return calls.
Not to me. You didn't. I don't have a written.
Did you talk to Megan?
No, I left you a voicemail and then I called back two days later and left another voicemail and no one's ever called me back.
I don't have a voicemail.
Well, I've left two. I can, I mean, I don't have my call log here with me that I can, I can show you when we chat, my call log, what date, because I write down dates.
What's a modi, what do you mean by modify?
Honestly, on your request, bring me your, bring your request to speaker. Honestly, the best course of action for you is to talk to Dr. Everett. She'll get you everything you need. You guys need to connect.
Why couldn't you tell me that last time?
She tried to contact you.
I tried to contact you.
And I don't know what else to do.
The week, like the day that you spoke to him.
I haven't heard a word.
She's tried to call you twice.
Twice. And the second time I called, it rang twice and there's like somebody voicemail me, it seemed like, because it rang twice and then went to someone voicemail.
So you can, you can talk about it in well.
A lot.
Because at least we can help you.
But there are good ones.
There aren't.
What you using for?
I can speak to it on an ancillary basis. I don't have it memorized in my head now.
Would you have that information? And you get that phone back? I'm able to see it?
What do you want to see? That's a question.
It's a financial statement.
Yeah, I'll give you all the financials over the last couple of years.
Fine.
Yeah. I'll tell you how to do it. It's a sunshine law request.
Thank you.
I need that back.
I'd like to know how many lawsuits you have involved in at this time.
That's not something we'll discuss.
I'm sorry?
That's not something we'll discuss. All right, we're calling the meeting.
Public information?
It's not.
No? Okay, thanks.
This time I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. First by Kaylee.
Second.
Here, Jill. Who's it you? It just blended. Second by Jill. Sorry, it just blended. I couldn't. I couldn't.
It's happening right now as much.
I know. All those in favor? And that passes six to zero. Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, at this time, I entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
First by Rick.
Second.
Second by Darren. All those in favor? And that passes six to zero. Up next, Dr. Bullemore, recognition employee of the month.
Yes, but please the board, we would like to recognize Nurse Jessica East of the High School as the classified employee of the month for November. So she was recognized where she was submitted from her principal, Dr. Wicken, and this is what she had to say on her. Jessica is an incredible asset to our school and does so much to take care of the health needs of our students. She's been a critical difference maker through multiple health emergencies and she brings a calm and quick response that assures students to get the care they need. Jessica is also an awesome team player and makes our school a better place. So we were able to award her with that last week, I think, and she was very thankful for that recognition. So we want to recognize Nurse East of the High School for all she does, for both the high school and the career center. So congratulations, Mrs. East.
All right, moving on to MSBA delegate report. Darren.
We got a video about the conference.
The Missouri School Boards Association Board Report. We begin with news from the state's top educational position. Missouri Education Commissioner Margie Van Devene announced that she is resigning effective July 1st, 2024. Van Devene informed State Board of Education members during their October meeting. Dr. Van Devene has over 30 years of experience, including seven years as Missouri's Education Commissioner, serving from 2015 to 2017, then returning to the position in 2019.
I have worked for a Democratic governor. I have worked for a Republican governor and I have found that when we focus on students, it should be a nonpartisan issue. As I mentioned, it's not the political choice, it's the right choice.
In a statement released that same day, MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall said, "Commissioner Van Devene's announcement of her resignation at the end of the fiscal year gives us pause to celebrate the work of a transformational leader whose dedication to Missouri's children has been unwavering and inspiring. She provided guidance and leadership to Missouri's K-12 systems during some of our state's most challenging times, staying laser focused on ensuring a quality education for every child. The commissioner has been an outspoken advocate for our teachers and has promoted strong local governance and improved investments in programs to safeguard our children. We remain committed to continuing the legacy of excellence she has fostered and look forward to working with her until her departure next year." For the past few years, Missouri school districts have seen an influx of funding courtesy of the federal government's response to the pandemic and other sources. As a result, education budgets benefited, offering support to districts across the state. MSBA Senior Finance Director Linda Quinley says that as some of that funding goes away, it's important for district leaders and communities to recognize and address the inevitable challenges ahead.
We are growing more and more concerned about the fiscal funding cliff that we know we've all been watching for, but is now actually here. We are looking at the end of our SRR funds. We also know that the DESI waivers are coming to an end. And then we have state revenues down significantly because of the tax cuts from two years ago that are continuing to roll in year after year. We also know that the enrollment and attendance numbers have remained low. So collectively, all of those things are going to impact the future opportunities for revenues for all of our schools across Missouri.
And it's never too early to start planning for your school district's next budget. Budget planning is a meticulous process that requires a thorough understanding of a school's financial needs, priorities, and constraints. A school finance webinar series hosted by Linda is starting at the end of this month. Get all of the school finance information you can use from the comfort of your home or office.
Our webinar series around budget planning and getting the budget to the finish line is really what we want to help people do, is intended for our brand new finance leaders, whether they be superintendents, bookkeepers, finance officers. They're also intended for people who've been doing this work for a little while, but want to figure out how to make their budget a more usable document for their board, their community, and their administration. So anyone who's involved in the budgeting process inside the district is welcome to participate in this and hopefully gain some insights, some tools, and some tips to really present a great budget to the board in the spring.
Topics include making and communicating the budget plan, projecting current year's actuals to spring board next year's budget, and more. Visit the MSBA website for dates for each meeting and registration information. And last, but certainly not least, thank you to all who hosted and attended MSBA's all regional meetings. Meetings were held in all of the state's 17 regions as attendees gathered to network, learn, and share with fellow public school leaders to ensure all students succeed. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting and we'll see you in December for the next MSBA Board Report.
All right, anything further, Darren?
Yeah, the conference was a couple weeks ago. I saw quite a few people. We did the MSBA delegate assembly was there and everything. So we did our business and took care of it. Was glad to be part of that this year again. Besides that, it was overall pretty good conference.
Maybe you have any questions for Darren? All right, hearing none, moving on to visitors form. We have one visitor tonight, Diane Elliott. On your request, I've got Dr. Everett's information on here I'll give you. And then for your COVID funds, you have to go down to the central office and do a sunshine request, okay? So that leaves you with welding and I think it's welding and audio on your list.
I was wondering, it's my understanding that's a very high interest in welding. I don't know if there's some safety issues with that in teaching that at the career center. And also automotive, if the automotive list is a couple hundred boys waiting or girls. Can we expand that a little bit? Those are my questions. Thank you. And I'd like them in writing.
All right, moving on to camera reports. Dr. Miller.
Albert, which one am I? Thank you. All right, what I prepared for you this month is a closer look at our resources. I know I've spoken to the board quite a bit about the new curriculum cycle that we have, but I really haven't gone into kind of how that affects budgeting and the overall big picture behind that. I organized, I took this back as far as I could, which is as far back as Deanne has been there because she keeps like the best records ever. So my personal assistant spent a great deal of time compiling all of these resources together so that I could kind of mess with the numbers and give you an accurate description of kind of how we allocate our funds, in my department anyway. So there's a variety of ways that you can organize this. For the most part, I have more than four lines in here, but to make it easier for you guys to understand, I've separated funds into texts and programs. So that's really anything involved with learning that is a cost associated with the kid. That covers textbooks, that covers library books, all of the things associated with that. In addition to that, technology is actually under me. There's instructional technology and then there's the this runs the building technology. For the most part, all of that is under me. Another category is testing. I don't know if you guys knew, but a lot of our MAP, EOC testing, we actually have to pay for that. It's pretty expensive to pay for. The last bucket I actually divided two ways. CTE is everything that goes into our career and technical education. In addition to that, and I'll point out what it is, I start talking about virtual learning and move away from career and technical education. This is nice, Albert. Thank you. Okay, so starting in 2016, 17, again, that was pre-COVID and for the majority of this report, I was not in charge of these funds. And so I'll, I'll tell you, when I kind of took over, I knew more about it, obviously, the years I was in charge of it. But you'll see that text and programming, right at $331,865.15, I literally have a list of anything that you would be interested in looking at. Technology is right at $600,000. For the most part, iPads and all of our Microsoft products are a huge expense. Any of the resources that we use now, you have to understand that kids, for the most part, don't open up textbooks anymore. They pull out their iPad. For the most part, the majority of our resources are in digital format at this point. So it would, it's easy to say, do we really need to spend that much money on iPads? But really, in order to teach now, it's just a pivotal part in education now. Really, every kid needs a device. Testing is always right around $40,000 every year for AP and of course exams in math. And CTE, the $12,000 isn't what it costs to run the career center, but that's specific to programs that I just house the budget or my department house the budget. So these are things like in the automotive, if they needed a new lift, we would house the money until they, they took that out. So grand total that year, now that you kind of understand how it works, also wanted to point out that I tried to pull out the major expenses within those buckets. So if you look Avid, that was the year that we started Avid. That was the year we tried everything. Avid was right at $30,000. Library funds, you can see, are about half of my budget. So a significant portion of funds goes to take care of our libraries and make sure that kids have access to all of that. So that's 2016. 2017 budget went up a little bit, but as you can see, $140,000 of that budget actually was Kaufman grant money. This was the year that we did the 17 month schedule at the high school. We did Avid. We dabbled in everything that year. So there's some significant pains associated with some of those things that we did. Again, right around $300,000, technology stayed around the same. Testing at $180,000, it went up because it just encompassed a lot of additional things that came out of that. I assume that the person in my role at that time tagged a bunch of the Avid stuff just to put it in a different bucket. So that's their choice, whoever's running this department. Again, significant library costs are $66,000. I don't know for sure, but my guess is it went down significantly because the budget was spent doing these other outside area things. So that is 2017. In 2018, the budget was right, right just under a million dollars. Again, Kaufman grant was a huge portion of that. Testing, again, is back to normal on that. Apple products are always going to be a giant expense for the district. Now, moving forward, you'll see a big expense with Apple products and a big expense with Chromebooks. Our secondary kids are now using Chromebooks and our elementary kids are having Apple, which is, in my opinion, ideal and what I had pushed for. So that's the correct device per what my vision was right now that we currently have. Northland Caps, this was the first year that we had Northland Caps. It started off, I think there were 14 kids. Northland Caps is a very expensive program that we offer to our kids and we're happy to pay it. It's a really good program, but you'll see that it fluctuates quite a bit depending on how many kids sign up. So that's a challenge to my budgeting. You budget as well as you can, but you hope that you're going to cover the amount of kids that are actually looking for that program. Again, a ton of grant fund went towards that. 2019, significant budget went up. Kaufman grant money, again, I think it was how the money was distributed. It all depends on how much the superintendent puts into each bucket. This is the, I remember I was at the high school and actually led this. Science department was on cycle that year and what that means is they wrote curriculum and a big piece of that is they choose the resources that they feel best meets the needs of the curriculum that they purchase. So that year, we spent almost $225,000 on science resources. Northland Caps, again, almost 60,000 and library, right around 60,000. You can also see, I start noting here, that virtual learning becomes a thing. So 96,000 of virtual learning that school year. This is also, help me, Dr. Tomlinson, this is like when we had, 2019 was the, we got out in March for virtual, right? Is this, this is the beginning of COVID.
COVID started in the spring of 20.
So this is the school year. Virtual learning, we had primarily chosen to cover our credit recovery kids at the high school. And so we were piloting that and that's how we really got started with virtual learning. 2021, again, textbooks stay right around the same. Libraries up to $88,000. Technology is there. And again, virtual learning is about $90,000. This is because it was a COVID year, you'll see the budget go up, but a ton of that was grant money that we got in the form of SRR and CARES grants money that was in, was a lot of support during COVID to try to help us with things like virtual learning and extra, you guys remember that time, there was a lot of grant money available. In the 2021, 22 school year, again, there was a ton of money left over, not only from COVID money that we had to spend, there was professional development funds that kept rolling over that increased the salary because there was no way to get professional development. It's not like anyone was, you couldn't send a teacher to a conference because it was still COVID times and they weren't open. Text and programs, 445,000. The big, what was on cycle that year was math. So K8 got $112,000 worth of math resources. This is also, I believe this is my first year on here, and this is when we used grant funds to pick up the Chromebooks. You can see that between the Chromebooks and some of the other costs, $310,000 were in grant money. Again, that's the tail end of COVID and some really good resources for the Chromebooks. 22, 23, overall $300,000 in text and programming, social studies, although they weren't on cycle, I believe that my good friend, Mr. Ruby, came to me my first year and said, can we please just get a social studies textbook that doesn't have Barack Obama as a senator in it still? And I said, absolutely. So the $80,000 there went specifically to middle school social studies resources. That also was the year, I think, we paid elementary to write social studies curriculum. So that was kind of on cycle for social studies. Again, huge expenses, Apple and your Chromebooks. And if you notice, virtual's going up a little bit at 105,000. Grant reimbursement was 310,000. That covered, I know, almost all of the Chromebooks with a little leftover. What I do want to say is that when you get here and you have to start something on cycle, it's financially responsible to spread out those purchases so that you don't have your math textbooks and your reading textbooks and everything all at one time because there's a significant cost associated with that. I looked at when our contracts were up with these resources and tried to space them in a way to put them in a cycle that's spread apart. Currently, this year, we are working with our science teachers. I have a huge cohort that's associated with the curriculum cycle. They start with Missouri Learning Standards. That's, that's the guidebook. They write curriculum based on Missouri Learning Standards and they select a resource that supports the curriculum. The only reason that I would ever tell somebody no on a resource is if it does not align to current state standards or our curriculum. Any other reason, I am super thankful to be in the position that I am where I rarely go to Dr. Tomlinson and he tells me no because of a financial issue. He's put, I know, our whole cabinet has put academics. It's, it's of great importance to the district and I feel that. So I, I don't want to say I get anything I want, but I get pretty close. So, yeah, I get pretty close. So I just wanted to share that with you, kind of to give you an outline. There's a lot of dollars that, that filter through my department. The one thing that I want to say is I take great pride in making sure that every single dollar that goes through my department goes directly to benefit a teacher or kid. The technology director and I, he does an outstanding job. John Coleman and I meet on a bi-monthly timeline and he does an outstanding job of making sure that instructionally, we are getting everything that we need technology wise too. I mean, literally, I told him, this is my dream that I want to see happen. And he was a huge part in making sure that I got funding for the Chromebooks. He's really been a wonderful support and a driving force in that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Can you maybe explain or tell the board maybe the differences of the evolution of technology and textbooks? Because I think in their minds, their picture when they were in school, they had a textbook for every class. Can you talk a little bit about how technology has changed that with some of the purchases we made?
So they got around actually selling hard covers, like these textbook companies are pretty smart. They recognize that selling a digital copy needed to be just as expensive as a paper copy or they were going to lose a significant amount of money. So what happens is when you say, we only want a digital copy, it's more often than not, they'll say, well, we'll throw in the paper copy for free. It's very rare that you can just buy the paper copy or just buy the digital copy. You end up with, with both of them. They're, they're still trying to keep funds available. So the majority of the time, to make sure that a kid has access at home to learning, it's the responsible thing to do to ensure that they have a textbook that's. So the majority of the time, to make sure that a kid has access at home to learning, it's the responsible thing to do to ensure that they have a textbook that's available on their device. So that is sure daytime, we have an AMI day or if they have homework, that it's, it's a really great opportunity for a kid to be able to have access to any of the information or the, the texts that they have at school. Like there's, their backpacks don't weigh as much as they did when we were in school. Like if you had a big finals week or something, you need a two wheeler to wheel all of your, your books home. So that's just no longer the case. But I will say, along with everything else, this stuff is expensive. I get mad at the guys all the time because they get gift pack, gift baskets from our construction people and our architects. It makes me furious and I spend $400,000 in textbooks and they send me a pen. It just makes me real mad because it's so expensive.
For the record, we did share the gift materials.
When I, for the record, when I say I threw a fit, I literally threw a fit in the middle of central office. So no, but this is a very expensive thing. But again, we are in a really good position in our district to have funds available to put them directly in the hands of our students.
So where are we at? And I know that as we've switched to Chromebooks last couple of years, are we fully like in secondary? I know we're like one-to-one on everything, but is all secondary one-to-one on Chromebooks now?
It is. So I had, I'm really, really intentional about my five-year plan. And I think anyone that works with me can tell you that I love planning like years ahead and I typically stick to that plan. So I had envisioned adopting Chromebooks, really filtering them in one grade level at a time. And I had a goal of trying to get them in the hands of our students for, you know, for over four years, financially responsible. So John, in his work with a lot of grant opportunities that he had, he would call me and be like, "I think they're going to open this grant. Do you want to go for all of these Chromebooks?" We were actually able to do that in two years. He and I met yesterday, I believe, on, it's, it's not enough to buy a kid a Chromebook. Eventually they go, they go bad and you have to responsibly, financially, you have to put them on a cycle to make sure that those are updated. Like the life of a Chromebook is about four to five years. It's about three to four years if you're a middle school student. They're a little, they're a little rougher on their equipment. So yeah. So wanted to talk a little bit, next month, I should be able to have, I know that our elementary schools and our middle schools are doing their second STAR assessment for reading. Super proud of the work that, I cannot say enough about the work that our elementary schools are doing with reading success plans. We are seeing dramatic increases in not only practice, but our student achievement already. So I'll be, I'm so excited to show you what it looks like at the beginning of the year and then the second data points so that we can see if we're growing, how our kids are doing. I will also say that the response to our current reading program, Wit and Wisdom, I think we received a lot of concerns from our teachers because they said how difficult and how challenging it was. And their kids were never going to be ready to do that and there was a giant concern. And our kids, I think elementary principals can agree, our kids are rising to the occasion. They're just doing incredible things with it. So yeah, very excited to present that stuff to you. I would, I can't wait to share math data with you either. I can't do that until Desi releases it publicly since this is a public forum and they just haven't, they haven't done it yet. But I'm, I would be shocked if they're not done by December. So I'm hoping to bring that to you next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
When's our first testing for elementary? Is this coming up? Like our first official testing for kindergarteners or?
Oh, that's a good question. So right now we're testing first through fifth grade. Kindergarten doesn't start until January. So they let them get through a semester of trying to walk in line and not cry and that kind of thing before they can actually sit down and take an assessment. So we'll have the first data point in January and then second data point moving forward. But I want to point out the things that our kindergarten teachers are doing. They're still using, a lot of the assessments are available to them, even though it's not an assigned one by me. They're still using a lot of the phonics work and the phonics training. In addition to that, I also want to say like, I'm working with Dr. Everett all the time in making sure that our sped department has access to the same things that they're getting in the classroom. Title is getting the same. My next, I think, big idea is to work on early childhood center to make sure that maybe some of those, I haven't had that conversation with her yet, but I've got more stuff for her to buy and put in early childhood center. So looking forward to that.
So, pre, before kindergarten?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, Human Services, Dr. Everett.
Okay. Boom. Okay, so this month, I just wanted to share a little bit about our Panorama data with you guys. So Panorama, remember, is a social, social emotional survey tool that we use. The cool thing about it is it's not just a survey tool. And so what we're really dipping our toe into this year is really getting the training and support in order to use it in its fullest capacity. And so our students take this social emotional survey three times a year. So they do it the first time in the, in the September, beginning of October. And then we do it again in January and then we do it again in April. And so we like to look, we compare, you know, throughout the year to see how our students are progressing. So this survey is for students who are in grades three through 12 and I'm very proud of our buildings. They did an excellent job this year. We had a 94.2% response rate. So this data is only as good as how many people take it. So if we don't do a great job of making sure all of our students are taking it, we're not doing a good job of measuring really how our student body is doing as a whole. In the past, we've looked at two areas. We've looked at grit and self-efficacy. This year, we're at, we've added a couple more areas because they're areas that I feel like really are in line with what we're trying to do with positive behavior support. And really just trying to help, you know, we've talked so much about all the amazing things that Dr. Miller has curricularly in our buildings. But if we don't have good behavior support and emotional support for our students, none of those things can, none of those things matter if students aren't able to be in a space where they're emotionally regulated. So we're looking at emotional regulation, self-efficacy, self-management and grit this year. There we go. So this is just a snapshot. So these are our third through fifth grade results. And so when you look at where it says like emotional regulation, 46%, that means that 46% of our students, third through fifth grade, picked one of the top two, like always or almost always in all of those categories. So like, I'm able to control my emotions when I get angry, always, almost always, those types of things. So that's what that 46% means. When we're looking at grit, self-efficacy, self-management, you can see this is how our students scored. What is a particular note to me is those percentiles. So that is national data. So every school district that utilizes Panorama, that shows you where our students rank in comparison to students in their same grade level. And so we know that our students have struggled with that grit and with self-efficacy. So self-efficacy is that idea that they know that they can succeed. They know that they can do it. So I truly believe this, all the things that Dr. Miller has put into place in our elementary schools with Wit and Wisdoms and STAR Assessment and those types of things, I really think we're going to start to see an increase in that student's ability to think that they can do hard things and that they are capable. And that to me is so very important. And so while those numbers look kind of yucky, like no one wants to be in the bottom 20th percentile nationwide, I think it's really important to see that that's where our third through fifth graders see themselves right now. But I'm confident that that is going to increase based upon all the interventions that our elementaries are putting in place. When you look at secondary, our numbers are a bit higher, our sixth through 12th graders. I know the middle school is going to talk in their board report about, like, there's been some big increases with our middle school. And I think the middle school is doing a lot of work on anti-bully initiatives and social emotional learning and interventions. And I think that that is really starting to show. But our data for both secondary and elementary show that we, self-efficacy and grit are our two biggest struggles. And I don't think that that comes as a surprise to anyone who, you know, is working in our buildings every day. Like it is continually our job to make students know that they can do hard things. And so a lot of these interventions that we're putting in place are directly geared toward that. Some of the coolest parts of Panorama, and this is the part that we are just, sorry, I'm not able to get my mouth, there we go. That we're really just starting to use this year is called the Playbook of Interventions. So we've been using Panorama for three years with, to do our survey. But what we have not been using is this amazing playbook of interventions. So the cool thing about Panorama is it takes not only the students' social emotional surveys, but it also takes their academic data. It takes their behavior data. It takes their attendance and it helps us create these really great intervention groups. And then teachers not only can help group their students, but then they can pick different interventions that they can utilize with their students. Probably one of my big, my most favorite parts of it is, is the, the effort level that it gives you. So like if I'm a teacher and I have this group of students and I know I need a quick intervention, I don't have tons and tons of time, I can filter my things by something that takes very little effort on my part. Or if I have a group that I want to do a very intensive intervention with, I can pinpoint that and do those. So that not only does it show the intervention, but it also helps you track data and helps you then do these little check-ins. Dr. Weezy at the middle school has brought us just a ton of information because she's used this in her previous district. And so she's been a great leader helping us with our positive behavior intervention support team, really dig into how to utilize these. And we're really seeing this being utilized at the middle school in great detail. So I'm very excited about that. I'm actually, tomorrow I am speaking at the Clay County Children's Fund Board meeting on like just how we use the Children's Fund grant as a whole. And so when putting that presentation together, I was really able to dig into some of this. And so I'm pretty excited to see where we'll go in the next several months. Another thing that we are obviously very focused on in my department is always anti-bully education and different initiatives. And so our elementary buildings have been doing great work, different assemblies and initiatives. The middle school is going to share something that's pretty cool. I'm not going to steal their thunder because they're going to bring something to the table here second semester that I'm very excited about. But another thing that I, our student council at the high school is just amazing. And so the work that they have done under the leadership of the adults in that building has been truly phenomenal. And I know they were able to do a poster session at the school board conference last week and they were very proud to be able to do that. But they just continue to find ways to try to bring the district together and the community together. And so this is an idea that they, they've come up with. It's all student initiated and so this just got sent out to all building principals, I think last week or the week before. They're creating a district-wide initiative and they're wanting to call it the Kindness Cabinet. They like, they're playing on the K's there, but where basically they have two to three students from each building as well as an adult sponsor. And they want to start meeting a couple of times a month to just talk about ways that they can bring the district together and do cool things that are not just at the high school or not just at an elementary school, but that are bringing the community together. And their big idea is they want to do a, a week in April that's a kindness week and then it'll culminate in some kind of big community engagement event. They don't know what that is yet because they want it to be driven by students. So they just sent out information to building principals last week to get kiddos signed up and they want to start meeting in December. So I'm very excited I get to be a part of that. So I'm very happy to see all the fun stuff that'll come out of that. And then just the last thing, this is just a reminder that we're doing a cool thing next week. So it's our second annual holidays. So this is, will happen on Tuesday, November 21st. It's just a shopping craft vendor fair for the community. It starts at 2:00 PM, but from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, it's VIP shopping for district staff and board members and family only. And then from 3:00 to 7:00, it is open to the public. And I actually just, we now, we now have four food trucks and we have 53 vendors. So it's going to be a pretty big event. I think we had 37 last year, so it's grown. But the other cool thing about this is it's just really a collaborative effort with students. We've got NHS is going to have a caramel apple bar and student council is doing a hot chocolate and coffee bar. And they're also providing childcare and games for people who want to drop their kid off while they shop. So will be a really fun event, so I hope you guys can come check it out. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Operations, Dr. Boland.
If it pleases the board, I'd like to give some updates on, from the Operations Department. So we'll start here with some transportation. So a major emphasis for transportation is safety. Two new things that we've started this year in the Transportation Department are a daily dispatch and a mobile manager. And what these things do is they, they track our driver safety is essentially what they're, what they're tracking. And so we get daily reports both on individual drivers and their driver queues. And we also get notifications on how our location is doing as a whole and as an average. The good news is we led, where we're close to leading the region, definitely high for ourselves, with nine five-star drivers. So a five star is as high as you can get. Through this mobile manager and the daily dispatch, it gives us specific areas where we could focus training on professional development for our drivers. And then they're able to give counseling and coaching knowledge to specific drivers, but also for the region and for the location. And really it helps us track these, this with actual specific data. And I'll give you some data points in a minute, but then, so it's not just anecdotal feedback on, oh, I think we need to do this better, do that better. It gives them specific, we have specific feedback on idling, on fast braking, things of those nature that's tracked through the GPS. And so they now have iPads in the, in the bus that are not only tracking them, how fast they're driving, when they're idling, where they're stopping. But it also helps them check the buses. It helps them do their rounds. It helps them do safety checks in the morning, safety checks in the afternoon. All of these things because we know safety is the number one concern. So these nine drivers that we had last month, which we're very proud of. So Becca Anderson from bus one at Oakhorn, Bronson Smith, who's one of our sub-drivers from our sub-driver program. He's a career center driver who subs quite a bit. Rachel Lacour, bus 15 from Oakhorn. Carly Magg, bus 11 from Cornerstone. Sarah Batista, bus 12 from Cornerstone. April Faulkner, bus 19 from Cornerstone. Angela Dorr, bus eight from Lewis. Joshua Goll, bus five from Oakhorn. And Joe Jackson, bus 13 from Cornerstone. So a couple of different areas where these are tracked. So the GPS tracks the drivers through idling, speeding, rapid acceleration and hard braking. And one of the hardest ones to control is the hard braking. A cat runs out in front of you. We know all the deer are moving this time of year, all of those things. You can't control those. If that happens one time, you cannot be a five-star driver for the day, for the week or for the month. And we had nine drivers who were able to get through that. So it's a little bit of luck, but it all, but also it's a being an active driver, right? So keeping your eyes moving. So they're also, speaking of that active driver realm, they're also analyzed on making sure they're looking ahead 15 seconds, right? So not like riding the bumper of other vehicles, which is very important. Maintaining adequate follow distance. Avoid focusing on any one object for more than two seconds. If you drive, think about these things the next time when you're driving home and think about how hard they are. And then think about driving a giant yellow school bus and trying to be safe and not being able to control everyone around you. These are things that they are judged on every single day. So hopefully it makes you feel a little bit better when your kids are riding the bus. Another one is surround yourself with as much space as possible. You think that's easy, but get yourself in a bus, it feels like you're taking up three of the two lanes. It'd feel huge when you sit behind the driver's seat. And then seek eye contact with motorists, bicyclists and pedestrians. So we have some things that are, that are tracked via GPS. We have some things there that are tracked by the other monitors, by other bus drivers to themselves. And so it really is hard to accomplish that five-star driver rating. And so we just wanted to make sure that we recognize those bus drivers, the effort they put into these things and, and the accomplishment of that month. I think already we have two or three that have accomplished five-star to this point for this month. So I'll, I'll report on that again next month just to give you a little kudos. But it's a hard job. You know, sometimes I'm driving with my three kids and they're acting crazy in the back and I don't know that I could accomplish any of these things. And they're driving a school bus full of 30 or 40 sometimes. So when you see them, thank for what they do. It's, it can be an English job sometimes, but we appreciate it.
How are we doing overall on driver wise?
So driver wise, we're good. We just got an update today at our director and administrator meeting. So we have 35 drivers for 33 routes. Now, like any other business, especially in education, there's sickness going around, there's influenza. Usually when it hits one bus, it also hits that bus sub who probably drove it the next day or the monitor. But we're really thankful to the efforts that the board put into raising that pay because it really helped fill our stables with the drivers. The driver employee program that we have where we pay them a stipend each month and pay them to do those things and drive those routes really is helping us fill those routes. Because a lot of times, even when you have a full stable, even before COVID, it was really hard to have all those activity routes. Because we go a lot of places and we travel a lot of miles. So Kim, want to be passed along as well? Thank you guys for taking that initiative to bump in that pay rate because that really does make a big difference. It, it helps them to keep going looking other ways. So it's a great question. So it's a great question. Thank you guys for that and that support. Uh, moving on to communication. So the printed Pounce newsletter should be hitting your mailboxes anytime. The big focus there were, um, school safety. As we've talked about some incidences here, but also nationwide. So we did a huge initiative on school safety, sharing all the things that we do in the schools, um, not only reactively, but proactively. Uh, we've really been ahead of the curve as a district. So we just wanted to make sure we shared that with our community because sometimes that stuff gets lost. Um, another focus was attendance. We've talked about that a lot. I'll share some attendance numbers here, um, but it's important. All the amazing things, our focus as a, as a district, as a cabinet and as a board on literacy, doesn't matter if the kids don't show up. Um, and the principals and teachers are working really hard in the buildings to address this. And we'll talk about those numbers in a second. But we also have to have support from home, right? It's a collaboration between the school, the home, and the community. We all have to be supporting it. Doesn't matter what we do in the schools if they don't show up. Uh, so we wanted to make sure we, we shared that data, but also shared the importance of that attendance in that Pounce. And you're going to hear from us about that all the time. And I'm sure we're hearing from our principals and teachers, but we want our kids to be there. It's super important. And then, uh, the staff newsletter, something that we're continuing. So we, something, one of our initiatives that we felt was very important as a communications committee, but also as a cabinet last year, was helping our buildings feel more interconnected. We think that was one of the impacts of COVID was you kind of feel like you're on, you're in your own silo throughout the city. Uh, so we try and get in, we try and get input and things that are happening in each school. We kind of share highlights, what's happening district-wide, what's happening in each school with the staff members. And we really feel like that's helped our schools, our staff, um, and our buildings feel more interconnected as a district and as one organism moving forward. Um, so we'll continue to do that and we get really good feedback on that, showing what's happening throughout the district. And then website update. Um, it is a long and arduous task trying to update a website, especially when you are not a web developer. But, uh, Presence has been a very good support. Um, our web is hosted through Presence, which is a power school, school messenger. Uh, we're at the stage now where we have a mock-up. And so now I'm working with the principals and also with Mr. Gander's animation media class to kind of customize each of those main pages for the buildings. So our goal is to roll that out second semester. I can't make any promises because again, web developers like the sixth thing that I do and I wasn't trained to do it. So they, they answer a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls from me, but it's going to be cool. And, and hopefully it's something that our community is excited to see. Uh, once we get that done, then we'll work on, uh, we have an app as a district. If you didn't know that, it hasn't been used for a long time. So we're going to look at trying to update that. And really it is just more of a condensed way to access any of the information, uh, that's on our website. But we're excited about those changes. Uh, share a little bit about attendance. Attendance matters. Again, doesn't matter what we're doing in our classrooms and the efforts our principals and teachers are putting in the classroom if kids don't show up. Green areas are great. Um, so year-to-date, that's where we're at with average daily attendance. And that's the change from 22, 23. So effort does matter, right? We're, we're, we're creating a pragmatic, um, very specific response to attendance, being proactive about those things. And it's showing in those percentages. Um, the career center is traditionally very high compared to everyone else. So they're down a little bit, but I have no doubt that they'll be back in the green anytime soon as well. Uh, those kids, having been at the middle school and then going to the career center, those kids love showing up there. Some of the kids that you had attendance problems with in other schools, they get to the career center and they don't miss a single day and they become your students of the month. So it's exciting to see that change. Um, I am a little nervous talking to the building administrators today about what next month's numbers could be because we've had hand, foot, and mouth, influenza A, influenza B, and there's something else that's been going around. I know my kids have had like all three of them. Uh, so those could be down a little bit, uh, maybe lower greens, maybe red. But again, as a district overall, it shows when you're taking something serious, when you're having a specific approach to it, it can have a positive impact. And that's good for us as a district with all the literacy focus we have in the classrooms. So good job, principals. Thank you. Staff attendance, so 97.6, which is, um, up from previous month and from this time of year last year. Uh, it's up from 95.9, so that's good. We're up 2%. And again, we've been talking a lot with our staff. We talked to the principals. The principals have been very proactive about staff attendance and having conversations with them, which I'm very proud of. So that's something that they're being proactive about too. Because again, doesn't matter what we're doing in the classroom, it's tougher if you have a sub. And there's some things that we can't control. Um, but having a trained teacher and letters or wit and wisdom in the classroom with the students is very important. And then our sub-fill rate is 94.8% for our teaching staff, our certified staff, which is above the greater Kansas City area average, actually. So North Kansas City was bragging about their 91%, so I can pull out our 94.8.
What do you think it'll be on Friday?
Friday probably won't be great. Likely it's one of 25 days this month. That's why we give the average.
People going over to watch the soccer championship.
That's why we give the average, President Harkins. Um, so that's all the updates for the operations department. If anyone has any questions, I'd like to ask.
Has our, our, our sub pool working, uh, the difference? How it's balanced out since the beginning of the year?
Our sub pool is good. We have specific days. So it used to be Fridays were really tough and Mondays were really tough. And we've had, um, we really addressed those days a lot. So what happens? There's another day that's higher. It always happens. Um, and some of the things we can't control, some of the things, you know, we, we're going to send our teachers to letters training. If we're going to have emphasis on literacy, that takes days. We're going to invest in our science curriculum and reviewing that. That takes some days. So some of these things are self-inflicted, but we don't look at it as wounds because it's the means to a greater good, right? We need these teachers to get this development so we can do the things in the classroom that we want to do. Um, some things come up like the flu that we can't control. Some things come up like a soccer team making it to state. You can't control that and survive in advance and move on to after Thanksgiving break. So good questions.
All right. No other questions. Thank you, sir. Next up is superintendent's report, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, sir. Waiting for my, uh, there it is. I want to pull this out and see if this works. I'm so excited about this. I don't know if it worked. Look at that. So you can access this, I think, or maybe, maybe it was not, I don't know. But I thought it'd be fun to take a look real quick at what the progress is over at Lewis. So you can actually see the steel going up over here. And you can see the parking lot being put in. You can see where the light posts have been poured, the concrete's been poured. There's curbing in there. Um, and where you see all the steel currently in this area here, I don't know if you can see my mouse or not, but right in that area, that's going to be the playground. So this will be the playground. This will be the classrooms. So if you've driven by and seen the building that's going on at Lewis, that, those are the classrooms that are being constructed currently. Uh, later on, they'll bring in the pre-cast concrete that'll go up for the storm shelter, which is also the gymnasium. So.
And it's on the place. The vehicle.
Correct. It'll be over on the vehicle. It'll be in this general vicinity right here. So here's what it looks like currently. I don't know. Look, I've never looked at it at night, but we can check on Wabash to see if there's a long line to get in Wabash or it's not. Looks pretty empty. That's the new Kurt Milvec's headquarters. All right. You can see those, see that inner island there was built? I don't know if you know, I just noticed it, um, either yesterday or today or maybe this weekend, but they put all the asphalt down in the front parking lot area. So there's really some good stuff going on. Yep.
It's fragile.
Yeah, I know it's pretty recent. Um, another thing we wanted to do is anytime you relocate an entire building off-site, they get disconnected maybe from the project. So one of the things we wanted to try to do is actually we're working with Dr. Comstock to, uh, we're going to send some buses up to, uh, the ECC and pick up all the Lewis staff on Monday. Uh, it's a PD day on Monday, so there won't be any students. And we're going to bring them down around lunchtime. And we're going to let every staff member sign a piece of steel that's going up into construction and also kind of give them an update, let them see the progress. We really want our staff to feel as if they're being included in this process and that they don't ever, I guess, take their eyes off the prize, right? It's easy to say, oh gosh, we've been, we had to move across town and we're in a modular unit and it's difficult, it's crowded. I, I get all those things, but we've got to keep our eye on the prize that there is progress. We are moving forward and we want them to feel a part of it. So I think that's going to be important. So, and I just wanted to show you that little video clip of some of the different, uh, angles of the cameras they have set up there on their work sites, but they're kind of cool, I think. I just thought it was fun to share.
Are we on schedule still currently for that?
We are currently ahead of schedule.
I could ask that.
Oh, it's better. And under budget. Oh, that's dope.
On schedule, on budget.
They hated when I said, I was like, don't jinx us. I go, I'm not jinxing. I'm just going to celebrate good news. So that's not what I wanted. Where did I, where did you take me off to for my report? I got sideways on this.
I got you.
You do?
Yep.
Nope.
No?
You closed it. Give me a second.
I closed it?
Yeah. Oh.
No? You, you put this mouse in my hand, you don't know where it's going to go. I'm going to go all over the place.
Good job, Doc.
There we go. Okay. Um, so we talked about the, the seal stuff, uh, steel signage on it. That's going to be out Monday. Um, I wanted to bring this back up because I want to talk about some of the big projects. So one of the things we're really focusing hard on is developing a budget, not just for next year, but for the next three to five years, right? We want to take a lot of our capital expenditures and then align those in a way that they're consistent budgeting items. For instance, I don't want to get a request from a principal or a director that says, hey, I didn't plan on this, but now I need to do this $500,000, you know, building addition or whatever. Well, I don't, we don't just have an extra $500,000 to be around. So what I want to do is we ask all the directors to put together a five-year plan. And then what we're going to do is we're going to reorganize it so they come in consistent chunks. So let's say every year maintenance needs $200,000 for HVAC work. And then, then we can say, okay, we can cover three of the buildings this year. We'll get the other three buildings the next year, so on and so forth. But every year you should have about the same budget. It should be consistent year over year. But we need to make sure the work is structured and scheduled in a way that it's set up like that. Does that make sense?
We used to do that under Dr. Lacy, Dr. Lawrence. We had a five and a 10 here and it was like quarter of Lewis's roof. And the front part is the high school parking lot or whatever, you know.
Correct.
So we did roofs, parking lots.
HVAC.
Yeah, HVAC and then like fields, turf, whatever.
Yep. Scoreboards.
Yeah.
Right. So here's some of the things that are coming up, but a lot of these are big-ticket items. So they take up, they really have a big impact on how we structure and how we organize the, the plan over the next five years. So for instance, we don't have to do those high school exterior updates. That would be staining the brick like we did Elkorn. It would just kind of freshen it up. It's, you know, it's going on with over a 20-year-old building now. So we could probably use that, but maybe we don't want to spend the $200,000 on that. These are the questions that we have. Like, do we want to do that? Do we not want to do that? Is it worth it? Is it not worth it? We, we go over these decisions every day. Uh, the new scoreboard we approved, I've got that in here. Tennis courts, I wanted to ask you about and really kind of just get a feel from the board. There's four different options, okay? There is a million-dollar option that is a post-tension solution. And what they do is they go in and they put in stakes down into the ground that goes down to the bedrock. So no matter what happens with rain, water, shifting, erosion, it just never changes the courts. That's why they last forever. You don't have to recode them because there's no cracking or issues with them. It's the most expensive option, but it lasts about 70 years. It's 70 years for a million dollars. And the first thing I tell you is we're going to spend the million dollars either way. No matter what, we're spending that money. The question is, do we spend it all at once for one long-term solution? Or do we want to go with a more of a, uh, a patch and work on five-year plans at a time? So for instance, there's also a $640,000 option. That would be if we resurface all the cords, fill in all the gaps and all that. The problem with that option is it does not fix the underlying issue, which is the erosion and the shifting of the concrete. So that would also fail at some point. So it'd be $640,000 today, probably last us 10 years, maybe 15 years, right? Or there's a $15,000 option, the cheapest option. We can go and just pour the little rubber stuff in the cracks, like you do on your, uh, parking lots and sidewalks. You ever see that stuff? We can just pour that in there and call it good. And it's not a trip hazard anymore. Still not really playable from a competition, you know, tennis standpoint. But it's the cheapest option. Could it work? Yes. Probably, you know, it's, we'd have to redo that every year. Might be a five-year or two, right? Uh, then there's an option that's about $170,000. That would be, um, resurfacing the cords, actually patching them, recoloring them. It's kind of that, it's the inexpensive way of getting it at least playable for now. But I, I want to make sure I explain that if we choose that option, it will have to be done again in five years or seven years. What, I don't know the number. It's going to depend on how it goes, but that kind of timeframe is going to happen. So we just have to start making decisions about, from a budgeting standpoint, do we want to go for the most expensive option, have the Cadillac that's going to last forever? Or maybe do we want to get the Honda Accord that's going to get us to where we want to go? See where we're going with this?
So I went up there tonight and looked.
You can like put your hand in it.
And it, um, yeah, I mean, it's got a crack, but it's cracking all those. There's a manhole on the south side. The crack perfectly follows that manhole. We have to line it up to the north. This follows it. And then court is sinking because we're the net poster at the asphalt. The hard surface has sunk four, five, six inches. And the last time they resurfaced it, they brought it up. Well, now that's just a puddle. So, I mean, no matter what you do in that location, other than drilling down the bedroom, it implies that they, it, the footer around the tennis courts, the concrete, it's all separating. There's like, some of them have six, seven inches. They got dips in them. I mean, big craters. It's, trust me, it's, well, the outside ports are saved, but it's just a matter of time before it just breaks into, so to speak, okay? Um, and it's that, it's the water off of it.
We also think there's a spring underneath that doesn't help.
So.
Is it the best position?
My question is, is that the best location that happened? Could we spend that million dollars and just build it somewhere else?
Not for a million, couldn't it?
Well, they're going to tear that one out and start from scratch anyway. So.
Or leave that one and you could do the nickel ball court there.
I mean.
It's already there.
Because, well, you gotta get rid of the hazard, one way or the other. But I mean, if they're going to tear that one completely out and then put beams down to the bedrock.
I mean, is that the plan of what this million dollars is? Are they tearing the whole thing down or is it just?
They're tearing it up.
They're going to drill down and then, I mean, obviously they're going to try to tear out part of it, but surely.
I think they leave what's there.
All, all, I mean, tennis courts is going to be more than a million.
Yeah, I, I'm definitely not a tennis court expert, but my, my best understanding is they would actually leave the existing court there, put the post-tension rods in all around it, and then they put another slate over the top of it. Um, and then that one would never move.
Right.
So it, it's.
What kind of guarantee comes with never move for 70 years is what I'm worried on that.
Now, he's, uh, he's been doing this for 20 some years, 25 years. And I think they, they said they've done over a thousand courts. And they have yet to even have to resurface a single one of those.
That's, I'd take those as an old.
Yeah, he's, he's the guy that I referred to as by our architect who works with him in schools all over the place. So it was a good reference. I would say this, the million dollars is, is a tough pill to swallow for us in our budget. Um, it's, if we wanted to go with the Cadillac version, I would suggest taking a look at a lease purchase on it. Let us pay for it over a couple of years and spread it out a little bit. That would be more affordable. I would say if what we want to do is just fix the actual issue at hand and then maybe push this down the road so when we have to take a look at maybe go updates at the middle school, because that's probably in that six to 10-year range, we're going to have to do some look at the middle school. Maybe we do this $170,000 option, kind of get everything just as good as new, playable, all this, knowing that's going to go bad again. But then when we come back and if, if voters want to put some work into the middle school, we can tie that into it and also update it at that time. That would be my suggestion. That's kind of the way I think that we're leaning is the $170,000 option. But again, it's a huge decision that lasts for a long time. I just want to be able to canvas you and just say, if, if there's no great decision here, right? I mean, if there were, maybe, but so anyway.
Would they be able to have it done by next spring?
No. No, it, it actually wouldn't be done until after that. Yes. There's not a big enough window in the spring with the weather and stuff. They couldn't do it.
I'm honestly not crazy about doing the patch fix. That drives, that drives me insane. Literally drives me insane just to throw a hundred thousand dollars at it and over guaranteed us not going to fix it. And then you're talking down the road, possibly updates to the middle school that may or may not. I don't like that personally.
I'm not for spending a million dollars. I think that's a lot of time on a tennis court.
Especially right now building a new school.
I don't disagree. I, I think it's the best. I, I would recommend doing it this way. I agree with you. It sounds like maybe we're just wasting it, but what we're doing is we're trying to use the money that we have and put it towards other things. And then, but we are kicking the can down the road. I just want to be perfectly upfront that we are kicking the can down the road. It still will have to be addressed in the future.
Because we've addressed the water issue twice that I can recall and it's still not fixed. I mean, this mother nature is just going to take it where she wants it. I bet you the storm drain under, that goes from that manhole, the stormwater drain goes under that tennis court is collapsed and that's what it's causing.
I think Jesse said there's a drain system.
There is, there's that manhole. So I mean, there's stormwater under there and I bet you it's just aged and it's collapsing and that's what's causing that.
Find out where the best location for it is too. Maybe it's not there.
From the little baseball field.
I actually think that would be the best location, especially if we use the, the long-term option, because it won't make a difference once they do that post-tension stuff. Then all that stuff becomes irrelevant because it'll last forever. Right? Well, yeah. Hopefully not, yeah. I don't think I'll live with that long, but. So anyway, I just wanted to give you an update there. It just canvassed you to get some impressions, but I want you to know kind of what we're leaning towards too. It's, it's not an easy one. I get it. That's why we.
I would too.
Okay, there you go. There you go. Um, also, we're going to take a look at all of our parking lots. So our parking lots are in pretty rough shape. Uh, we've had a lot of construction over the last couple of years and that tears up our parking lots. So we do have a plan in place to work on the middle school, Elkhorn and central office parking lots this summer. And then we're going to turn around and try to do the, uh, high school and ECC next summer. We're not going to do anything to the ECC until Lewis gets moved into their new building because all the traffic and everything there, we're going to let that just go. Try to make it as long as we can. And then as soon as they move out, we're going to go in and put some money into fixing it back up to the way it was before. So those are just some updates on that. The, the exterior updates that are on there, that's also the restating like we did at Elkhorn. But for $75,000 to basically paint brick of an entire school, it's a pretty good deal. I mean, it's pretty cost, cost effective compared to other options, so.
Or is all that staining, I think I've asked this before, is all that staining going to match the, like the new Lewis and Cornerstone currently? Is that going to be the exact same color?
It'll be very similar, yes.
That's why I just.
It'll be exactly what we.
We talked about before, just a little color-wise.
It'll be exactly the same as Elkhorn. But it, but is it a little different from the new construction? It is a little different, but.
It's an actual bridge.
Yeah, they just get it close. That was it, sir.
Anything? Any questions? All right, moving on to discussion items. First up is community survey results. Here's Rick Nobles here.
No, it's me. I am going to be giving a presentation. I can tell you're all very excited by that.
We're at the Michael Center. Now I've got it here. Got so excited with the superintendent report. I don't know where I put all that stuff. Maybe you're flying this Lisa.
No, I'm just, I'm just kind of stubborn like this. I just want to keep going until I find the number.
You should have been.
There it is. I know, right? I'm not organized without Lisa there to help me during the day, so she's invaluable to me. So just a premise, the, what the purpose of this survey is. So we do a community survey each year and we ask patrons in the community and we split it up equally. So we actually have a market research firm that will actually call specific numbers in specific areas. And once they get enough people from the Cornerstone area, they don't, they won't take any more surveys from those people. They'll only take them from Lewis or Elkhorn until they fill up their quota. So what we do is we do about a two to one on, uh, the other two elementarys to Elkhorn. So let's say if we had 100 surveys from Cornerstone and 100 from Lewis, then we do 50 at Elkhorn because it's about my size. Does that make sense? These are done to a statistical probability of plus or minus 5%. So you can increase that by having more phone calls made, you spend more money for that. Uh, but plus or minus five, I think is good enough to give us an idea. I'm not going to go through all the four reports that we have in there, but we did a telephone survey throughout the whole community. And then we also did online surveys that were available to, uh, anyone in the community, uh, just our staff and then just our parents. So those were three surveys and then this one would be the fourth. So there's four in your packet. I'm just going to go over the overview, the summary of it, but you're welcome to take a look at all of those. Um, we like to use this information to see, okay, how do people feel about what we provide as a school? These are not statistical facts of what we do. This is how people think we do. But so it's, it's us reaching out to our community and us asking them, hey, what are we doing well and what can we do better? And I think that is being able to be open enough to ask those questions to our community, I think is the first step in being a transparent organization, but also about being receptive to what people say they need and want. So if we take a look here, uh, I'll kind of go through this. This is, this isn't the one I wanted, honestly. This one? That's our dashboard. I'm going to go everywhere here. Is this the one I want? Ha, here we go. So they grade the overall district performance, uh, the quality of our school facilities. So we've asked, again, there's quite a few questions on here, but the top performing areas, so the quality of school facilities scored well. Uh, preparation for students for college, vocational training or employment, the district's efforts to foster a caring and inclusive environment, the quality of education, the district's efforts to promote a collaborative and supportive climate among students, staff and parents, and the safety of all staff and students. Those were reported as the strengths from our community. Uh, if you notice in here, there's some of the highest rated factors they have seen on this type of survey compared to similar schools in Missouri and the Midwest. Uh, so that was something that they were a little bit surprised and seeing that all of those numbers were as high as they were. They do get some answers that will say, I don't know. They categorize those as well. Be looking here and doing, so don't know topped the list of strengths. 66 people said, I don't know. That is followed by teachers and staff and provides a good education. So I can tell you right now that that, that don't know means that we need to step up our work when it comes to communication because we want people to know the good things that are going on. And so I'm going to be willing to bet, I'm going to spoiler alert here, that in the needs to improve upon is communication, okay? So having don't know is the top response for both strengths and areas for improvement is interesting predicament, right? It's good news because a notable percentage of the population has no specific concerns. We concur with that, but it is concerning when 22% respondents could not list something the district's doing well. So that's a communication issue from us. This section of the survey talks about the six high-scoring statements of agreement. And that is it's important for us to keep our school buildings up to date. Investing in school improvements now will benefit future generations. The quality of our district provides a strong foundation for property values. Uh, I'm proud of the condition of our schools. I'm willing to support building improvements to make sure it'll help, uh, the school district be equal to or better than neighboring districts. 92% said that. I would need more information on what building improvements are planned before I would support the new ballot issue. That's a few years out for us, that's not it. Uh, remaining state of the district does a good job of listening and responding to community opinions. Still had 56% agreement from respondents. We had 61% last year. It's very common for us to dip a little bit after we have a bond issue or a levy issue because there's so much communication going on with that. Uh, but that's one of the areas we're going to improve upon. Uh, facility improvement planning talks about what the community would like to see as far as very important or somewhat important. Uh, replacing roofs, windows, doors, plumbing, 99% of people are good with that. Energy efficient upgrades, 98% of people want those. Keeping classroom instructional technologies up to date, 98%. Updating playgrounds for safety and durability, 96%. Repaving sidewalks and parking lot areas, 93%. These are things that are basically universally expected by our community. I added a question to this year's survey, first time we've ever asked this. And I just, I was curious. I was like, with the changing demographics in our community, we have more people moving to the west side of town and it's kind of throwing things off kilter a little bit. Lewis and, and Westview used to be the same size. And now Cornerstone is much bigger than Lewis because there's more people moving over there. But the other issue is Elkhorn. Elkhorn hasn't grown either. So the question was, uh, would you be supportive of us moving elementary bound, boundaries to provide more equitable, uh, education in our elementary schools? And 81% of respondents supported the idea. Only 4% say, no, you should never do that. So that would, this specifically in, in reality, what we would look at would be shifting the Lewis and Elkhorn elementary boundary to provide more students to Elkhorn so that it's a more viable school and has more, uh, equitable classroom sizes with the other two buildings. And also, uh, take some of the students out of Lewis to make sure it gets started as, run it as efficiently as it can. They have a couple of grades that are a little heavy, a little big. Uh, so if we could offset that a little bit by moving some of the kids over. It's a hot topic. It's not a popular topic. Telling somebody they're moving elementary schools, no, no one is excited to do it typically. But in the long run, if it's the best thing for the district moving forward, sometimes we have to make those decisions. It's something I definitely want to bring to your attention and say, this is something that we need to consider and look at, at least track. Even if we don't do anything today, we need to start tracking how many students we have at those and what the growth looks like, okay? But I think it's pretty exciting that 81% support it. That was higher than I thought it would be, to be honest. Uh, communication from the district. This is what they said, uh, what they have here, websites, 24%, social media. After that is their kids and grandkids, local newspaper, newsletters, mailings. And this was analysis. This is not written by us. This is written by a third party. And what they said is, uh, just as for last year's survey, we struggled to find a superlative worthy of such an outstanding research study. The district is simply doing a remarkable job of molding students into the future of productive and well-rounded citizens. I don't know how you get a better endorsement and review than that. And this is just compared to the types of data that they get from other schools that they also survey. So that is a summary of thousands of data points that were put and gathered for this. Uh, we like to do this longitudinally. So we like to do this every year in the track of progress, how we're doing in each of those areas and then look for changes and say, okay, well, why did that change? And how do we explain that? And what can we do better moving forward? Our biggest takeaway from this is there are certainly things that our community supports and wants and expects. Uh, there's also some things that we probably need to do a better job on. How do we engage them, communicate with them, find ways to reach and connect with them on, on their terms? So that's kind of by over all of this, but you guys had a chance to look through all the data. Do you guys have any specific questions from what you saw?
Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right, next up is a middle school report.
I actually have Dr. Wheezy with me too. Can you hear me?
No.
I'm Miss Padlock and one of the assistant principals at the middle school. This is Dr. Wheezy, the other assistant principal at the middle school. And we are here to present our middle school report. Can you go to the next? I don't have a mouse. Oh, I have a clicker. Thank you. Well, our goals from last year, we wanted to improve our student achievement, offer more opportunities for learning and increase attendance. And then a big one is decrease the bullying, the fighting and the bad behavior throughout the middle school as they get prepared to go on to the high school. So this year, increasing achievement, when we talk about what you have right now, which kind of didn't come out very well. You have preliminary math results, so we don't have everything, but we'll touch base that right now, the middle school is sitting at 63.7% for their APR. And that looked at four different categories that later on, Dr. Miller will touch base on and when she presents all that to you guys. So if you look at some of the math growth though, that we kind of, again, preliminary, sixth grade ELA increased 13% and math, we increased 6%. Seventh grade ELA increased 6% and math increased to 8%. So if you look at the growth on this side there, we went up quite a bit. In eighth grade, we increased 10% and increased in ELA and 2% in, um, math. So we kind of went down a little bit, but if you look at our Algebra I scores, then those are at 100%. So that's amazing because those kids can't be counted twice. So that's actually very good for us. Science, however, was not that great. Thus why we need some science probably curriculum and taking a look at. Yes. So science, we think, um, went down a little bit. There's a lot of factors that go into science, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time hashing that out. There could be some tests with T because A3 has to take three huge tests. And again, our Algebra I students have to take the EOC part of that. So there's quite a bit. Really what we like to focus on, there's some great kiddos getting the elite honor roll, is that wonderful bullying and increased opportunity data that Dr. Miller, or Dr. Everett.
Seems to be on the elite honor roll.
The elite honor roll actually looks, we just kind of did that differently this year. So it looks at attendance, it looks at grades and it's their overall GPA. So if they have close to a 4.0, because it's very different when they transition from those sixth graders they get from middle school to elementary, so all that goes into play of that. So increased opportunities, Dr. Wheezy's going to talk to you about some encore classes and intermurals and clubs.
Okay, so we were looking for opportunities for our middle schoolers to feel that sense of belonging. Um, so we did that by incorporating 29 new encore classes into our day. Those are our first hour and eighth hour in the day. We also added 12 new intermurals and seven new clubs. So we had everything from, um, pickleball after school to Dungeons and Dragons. So every kid could find their happy place. And we saw that those encore classes, which were separate, are making a big difference. Um, our Girls on the Run brand their first 5K and our Mythbusters group is testing their myth at the community center tomorrow.
Yep.
See if their boats sink.
So come sink or float.
It's a big moment. But we saw the impact of that in our attendance. Um, so in '21, '22, with remote presence, we had an attendance of 93%. In '22, '23, when we did not get to count that remote attendance because of COVID anymore, we dropped down to 92, or 90%. But this year we've popped all the way back up to that 92.97. And that's because we've got that encore first and eighth. They want to be there the whole day and we want them to be there. While they're there, they're making better choices throughout their day and we're really excited about this. Um, in '21, on this chart, you can see this was, um, when we were hybrids. We only had about half the kids in the building and so we had fewer disciplinary incidents. In '22, when everybody came back, you can see we had a lot more discipline incidents that were happening. But this year we have decreased our OSS, our ISS, our detentions, our lunch detentions, and our recovery room and mediations have been going great. Um, our kids are making better choices while they're there and we are keeping them in classrooms where they are learning and we love it. Um, as Dr. Everett talked about earlier, when we asked our kids how they feel, um, they're telling us they're feeling good too on our panorama surveys. So for self-management, they were in the 60th to 79th percentile. In grit, they actually moved up 7% at the middle school level. So even though they're at that lower 20 to 39 percentile, they bumped up 7%, which is huge. Emotional regulation, we hit the 99th percentile nationally. Um, and then again bumped up 7%, 7%, 7% in self-efficacy. So they're starting to believe in themselves more, um, which is awesome because who could not believe in these goofballs? So self-efficacy was a huge piece, which ours, you saw, we increased by 7%. We were hanging really low in the 40 percentile and we feel like we are addressing our bullying issues a lot more effectively. So this year we have really, really looked at our Spree View and our discipline data. So every day we have a program that is for you where kids at home and our parents and it's an app, it's a website. and it's an app. It's a website. They can report a tip. They can do it anonymously, or they can report it. They can tell us. And they, it's a kind of a private way for them to tell us what's going on, what's happening. And they can find their school. It's super easy. It then emails us, principals, and the counselors immediately. And we're very proactive. We have conversations. The minute they come through, we look at those and we kind of hash out how we're going to handle it, who's going to talk to a wet kid, what's going to be happening, which then can lead to safety plans. Do we need to issue those? Mediation. We are now doing check-in and check-outs, which is kind of similar to like what the elementary used to do, or they still do, but we're now doing that at the middle school level. So students, we found, really need their person. So we have created between the principals and the counselors, a check-in, check-out system, and we check out with a few students every day. We have parent permission, and we ask them how things are going, which has really helped on that proactive versus that reactive. And we think that that's kind of helping our self-efficacy as well. We are also doing resiliency training in grade-level meetings, and then succeed anti-bullying training. This is what Dr. Everett kind of touched on. So we're super excited with our PBIS. We're going to be implementing a new anti-bullying program, and it's going to be coming to us, I believe, right after Christmas break, because we're going to do some training. And where we're going to be going in and teaching kids very specific lessons, we're going to be able to take groups of kids, and that's going to tie into our panorama data that we've grouped kids in. So our student concerns meetings, things that we are addressing are being very proactive and very goal-oriented as well. As you can see, we're bringing back our Tiger Students of the Week and our Character Awards, which is huge. So recognizing so many kids weekly and getting that out in the Students of the Week. So how kids can, they're nominated by their principals, they're nominated by their peers, they're nominated by their teachers. So everybody has access to who can get Student of the Weeks. And we're recognizing those kids more frequently, and it's making a positive difference. And I do believe that restructuring of our PBIS and getting those very specific expectations and having that back district-wide has made a huge difference as well for us. So this year's goals, we're going to continue to improve our student achievement. We're going to offer more opportunities for student leadership. We're going to improve those peer relationships to that positive school culture, and that's going to go with our new bullying program that we're implementing. And then apply reading interventions and individual reading levels. So those reading success plans at the elementary that Dr. Miller's talked about doesn't just stop at the middle school or stop at elementary. It comes on over to the middle school. So we're excited to see what great things the curriculum and everything has to offer us. So that is us in a nutshell. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Can you touch base on the check-in, check-out thing again?
Yeah, so check-in, check-out. So we kind of, I kind of sold it, kind of what we used to do from elementary. So you have that one person that checked in with a student that kind of is that frequent flyer, or a kid that, the student keeps entering spring year reports. We need to have a touch base. So in order to kind of be proactive, they have their one person, they enter the building, they come talk to us, like, how was your night? How are things going? Did you have any issues? The problem when they transition to the middle school, they have lots of social media aspects and things at their fingertips. So we kind of make sure that we're going to hit the ground running with a positive day, and that none of that's going to kind of interfere with their learning. And then at the end of the day, we call them out, and they just come up to the office, how'd your day go? You know, just have a conversation. Just be that one person. Or they email us. Like, I had my check-in, check-out kid today email me, and she just needed to vent that a boy told her that girls are meant to be in the kitchen. And she's like, I just need to tell you that, because that's not true, and I want to play football. I was like, you play football, girl. So just having that one person. You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, well, that's all we have for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
I also want to, I just want to clap.
I know, dude. Clap for us. He comes out.
All right. Our last discussion item is nursing and wellness program.
Yeah, so I won't take a lot of time here. I just kind of wanted to put this on your radar. Obviously, this is my first year in this role, but one of the things under my umbrella is nursing. And so when meeting with our district nurse, Laney, we kind of at the beginning of the year, made a list of things that we want to get accomplished. And just through some needs analysis, I feel like there's a lot of things that our nursing program needs to improve upon. And she is so excited to kind of hit the ground running on getting all these things created. You know, we're in that post-COVID era now, and so where we were in triage mode for a long time, I think medically and with schools, with nurses and things like that. Now we're in a situation where I think we need to be a little bit more proactive. And so Laney is doing a great job. She's been connecting with other district nurses around us. She spent a day with the person who holds her position in the Liberty School District and shouted her and kind of made a list of kind of how they do things. She's speaking with some smaller districts, too, just so that we can get a good needs analysis in for that program, so that we can make sure that is as effective as necessary. Like, we have had a nurse out on maternity leave and things like that. When you have extended absences like that, it becomes much more apparent, the need for really good concrete information, so that no matter who steps into that office, our students are being supported equally. So our program evaluation is not actually due until December of 2024, but I'd like to, in the spring, bring to you guys a new program evaluation, because we have some short-term and long-term goals that we want to get accomplished before next school year. So I just kind of wanted you to know that that's why we're going to go ahead and move that up, so that you can kind of see. I won't go through all of these goals with you, but I just wanted you to see there's some short-term goals that Laney's really working on with her staff before January. Some things are really simple. Just, we have another thing that, when we've had our school nurses from Lewis and ECC are now in the same building. And so you see that maybe one of them is doing something one way, where another one is doing something a different way. Well, something as simple as a shared Google Drive with all of the same forms and things like that, there is a simple way to start streamlining that. So she, they are working on collaborating and updating all their forms in that Google Drive, getting better information on our website, field trip forms. So when we have students who are medically fragile or who have any sort of medical needs, having good documentation that they take with them on a field trip, because you don't have a school nurse with you on every field trip. But when there's a student who's on a field trip, we need to have really good documentation of what that student needs if for some reason a medical emergency comes up. So that is something that we think is really important to get done as soon as possible. And then just updating templates and nurse subbinders and getting, making sure that those emergency bags in every nursing station is, are filled appropriately with all supplies that are needed, no matter who's in there, that they don't have to find a cabinet to figure out where something is, that everything's in those emergency bags, and so they're ready to go. And then some bigger goals, you'll see that on there, but just a better template for our end-of-the-year board report, just where we are really looking at the number of nurse visits that are happening in each building every year, so we can determine, are we adequately staffed where we need to be? What kinds of things are our school nurses being asked to do? Protocols in place, whether that is for something as simple as lice, or something as big as if there is a medical emergency, whether it is a student, how we act in a triage situation, and then same thing if it's a staff. You know, we've had a couple situations where we've had staff members have seizures or things like that, and we want to make sure we have very good specific protocols, so that we, our nurses know exactly what is expected of them, so they're not trying to worry about that during that crisis situation. So you'll see, those are all of our goals. But we will, in the spring, once that district-wide nursing manual is created, I'll bring that to you for approval, just because I'd like for you to know what's in that manual for all of our people. And then we're just going to keep working to make that program better. Any questions for me about nursing?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Do they have any questions? All right. At this time, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Darren.
Darren.
Great second.
Congratulations to our soccer team.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, their game's Friday. They'll play Friday and Saturday. So Friday is the semifinal game, and then if they win, they win. They'll play for the championship at 5, I think, on Saturday. And the third-place game is, I think, at 2:00 or 2:30 on Saturday. So they'll play.
They're playing for first or third.
So we play the Westminster Christian. It's a small, private school.
All those is favored?
My table will be there tomorrow, because we got to go downtown to Franklin. You can raise a razor form in our Tyson the next day.